In the absence of the President, I'd like to call the June 28th Special Meeting of the City Council to order, a motion for President Protem.
Motion to elect Councilor Figgy as President Protem. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, fellow city councilors. Roll call, please.
Flaherty?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Matthews-Kane?
Here.
Mello?
Here.
Morganelli?
Here.
Oniski?
Here.
Sullivan?
He will not be here tonight.
Adams?
Here.
Alley?
Here.
Bean? Beltrandy?
Here.
Burns?
Here.
Figgy?
Present. Thank you. Communications from the Mayor. Counsel Flaherty, would you take that, please?
Sure. Mayor's requesting immediate consideration for appropriation of $1 million for free cash to reduce the FY '22 tax rate.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Counsel Flaherty.
I'm not going to block immediate consideration, but I am going to vote no. This is better than it was at the start of the budget. We had $2 million in the original proposal. If you remember, the other night, we moved some things around with engineering, and we're going to take the million out of stabilization. So that reduced the need for the free cash. I'd still like to see it go to zero and have us annually, on a regular basis, not use savings for our operating expenses. So that's the reason I voted no. I do appreciate the adjustment we made the other day, but I think strategically, we should always shoot for zero use of free cash and stabilization at budget time and save that money for capital or one-time expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Alley.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. I mean, last year, we ended up putting a bunch of money in stabilization. I don't know why we're not taking it out of stabilization, but just because of the situation we found ourselves in, we ended up sticking a ton of money all into stabilization. And so, which we nominally would not do, you know, not that amount. So, like I said, I don't understand why we're not taking, you know, money out of stabilization to do this. You wouldn't have a ... Do you mean, so we were in a kind of an unusual situation last year, where we put a lot more money into stabilization than we would've? You wouldn't have had a problem with that, right?
Counsel Flaherty?
So, yeah, at budget time last year, we ... No, we certainly didn't do that. At budget time last year, we had a conservative budget because of the anticipation of state aid cuts. State aid came in higher as we got at tax setting time. At tax setting time, we voted to increase our taxes in order to put that money into stabilization. If we didn't take that vote, we would've had a tax decrease last year in that same neighborhood. So we voted to increase taxes, to cause it to be a zero tax increase essentially, and we put the money into stabilization. The purpose of putting in stabilization was to use it for capital things, not operating things. Our operating budget last year balanced at budget time, based on what we knew at the time. All right? So, it's a different thing. Last year, we took a million and a half out of free cash and gave it to the schools at this time, remember? That's what we used it for last year. And if you go back in history, you'll see that, you know, late in Mayor Canapick's term, we started doing that kind of stuff on a regular basis, started spending more money out of free cash at budget time, instead of sitting on it and using it for one-time expenses. Prior to that, a lot of that money, free cash would get certified in the fall, and then the mayor would come to us with a list of capital projects or priorities and say, "Here's what I want to use the free cash for, for one-time expenses," not to pay our operating bills. That's a completely different philosophy. And I think we're in this pattern of this free cash number getting bigger and bigger over time at budget time. And it's just not a good practice. None of you would live like this at home. You wouldn't, you know, we have right now over five, well, just under $5 million because of the change of may last week. $5 million in new spending. We can only raise 2.6 million in taxes. Like, the math just doesn't work. None of you would live that way at home. And none of you would say, "You know what? I won't pay the electrician this month. I'll pay him, you know, my grandkids will pay him down the road and pay off his health care." That's what we're doing. I told you, the OPEB went up $87 million. That's the obligation we owe people in the city. It's now $350,000 net present value. We can't live like that. So, I think we really need to address this in the future. I know we can't do it now. I certainly know we don't have the votes for it. You know, I'm also disappointed in the way this went. I mean, we had dozens of hours of meetings, very few questions. We all made very complimentary things to some of the departments, very few questions, very few suggestions for budget cuts. I think, I think I made almost all the budget cut requests, and Counselor Sullivan followed up and cut one of mine in half, and I agreed to it. That was all we did. The council didn't make any real effort to adjust this budget, and we certainly didn't have a game plan going into it. And I think we're doing a disservice to the people who put us here, and we're putting the city in more debt, passing this on to the next generations, and we really need to change behavior. Thank you.
Counsel Alley again.
If I may, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. President Protem, I think that the departments, the part of the budget that they manage, they do a good job running the departments. We've got great, great employees, great department heads, for the most part. That's not the part of the budget that's ... It's the contractual agreements that, you know, that was in the budget signed over two years ago. That's the part that's bussing the budget in terms of the increase. I think the various department heads, for the most part, like I said, do an excellent job. Sorry about that.
That's Obama calling you.
Okay. But that's what's bussing the budget, and that's something that this mayor not even have a shot at. That'll be negotiated next year. Those are one of the things that's bussing the budget. Each department head comes here and says, you know, they just mentioned contractual agreements. They've done a great job, I think, with the budget that they have, the part that they can control and work with. So, I think that's where, you know, that's why I supported their budgets, because what the work that they did, they're doing a great job. Their hands are tied. You run a business or a small company, whatever, you have to control labor. They don't have that option. That's one of the things that's driving us when we can't afford it. And I think we agree to that. So.
Thank you. Counsel Flaherty for a second time.
Yeah. So, it is our job to control the labor. Who do you think approves the labor contracts? The mayor negotiates, he sends them to us for approval, and everybody just rubber stamps them. It's our job to approve those contracts. And if your company is spending 10% more every year than it's bringing in, you make adjustments, and you have to live with those adjustments. And that's what we should be telling these department heads. We have this much money to spend. You have to figure out how to run your department the best way you can with that amount of money. That might mean adjusting people. That's just the way it works. Or changing the benefits. The second biggest line item in our budget is benefits. That's something we have to address. But you can't just say, "Oh, it's an excuse that somebody else signed a contract and we're stuck with it." No, we're not. We're able to appropriate money every year. If we don't appropriate the money to cover that contract, they have to make adjustments in their staffing, just like restaurants do when they, you know, if business falls down because of COVID, restaurants start laying people off. They adjust the schedule. We can do that kind of thing in many of our departments, and we made zero effort to do that. We can't just accept, "Oh, it's just another contractual thing." That's just not the way it works. We have responsibilities to try to fix this, and I, this mayor didn't sign all these contracts, but he did sign a bunch of them. And, you know, some of them are coming up for renewal. We can't just say, "Oh, it's just a contract. That's okay," and 80% of the budget flies by without any ability to control it. You know, it's just, you know, it's very, very frustrating when you look at the numbers. And, you know, the employees here deserve better. If we're telling them how wonderful they are, one of the most important things to them when they retire is that health insurance, and we have to take care of that. That is, you know, those of you who are getting close to retirement, you know that is one of the largest expenses in retirement. And if that money is not available, that's going to be a big problem for these people. So I think to be fair to everybody and to be fair to our kids and grandkids, we can't pass them $350 million worth of debt for work that's been done from today backwards. That is just grossly unfair. So, you can tell I'm going to be a no on things, but I think we really have to change strategy and behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, okay, Counselor Mello and Counselor Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. Not having the historical context, and thank you for that, but the question today is about whether or not we spend $1 million of the free cash that we currently have in order to reduce the tax burden, correct? That's not actually reducing the rate. The rate gets set in fall. Am I correct in my understanding?
Mm-hmm.
So this, this is $1 million of what we have sort of in the bank that got certified last fall, right?
Mm-hmm.
Put toward the upcoming debt so that the tax burden becomes less? Is that correct? Well.
No. So, the tax burden is 2.5% tax increase in the budget minus $300,000. That's in there. This is to fill the hole. We're exceeding what we need by this $1 million. It's not, the tax increase in the budget right now is 2.67 million dollars, which is $300,000 less than it could be if we went to the maximum, 2.5%. This is a million more on top of that. So by adding this million, or if we took this million away and made it zero, for example, we could not increase taxes high enough to cover the million. This million is needed to balance the budget as submitted. That's why it's in here. It was $2 million, but we took $1 million out of engineering and moved it to stabilization.
Right.
But that's the reason, is we're spending more than we're taking in. We can only tax 2.67 million plus the $300,000. That's the maximum we can raise our taxes right now. New growth could come in a tad higher. New growth is in the budget at $1 million. It could come in $1,400,000 or $2,000, you know, somewhere up there. So, in November, we could have more flexibility to change the taxes and lower it. But this million is on top of the maximum tax increase minus $300,000 that's already in the budget.
So, $700,000 of this appropriation is required to make this budget fly?
Yeah.
The other thing to remember, too, is that appraisals are coming in. They're going to be coming in higher than, than they were last year. So there's going to be an increase in revenue that way as well. So when we get to setting the rate time, there is, like Counselor Flaherty said, more flexibility because of these things. Nationwide, houses have gone up 20%. In Westfield, speaking with the assessor, it's going to only be five. So we're catching a break there. But.
Okay.
It is, it's a delicate balance.
The tax bills have nothing to do with how much the values of the homes are. The tax bills are set now, when we set this budget, we're increasing taxes $2.6 million. If houses go up 5% or 10% or 20%, it's not going to bring in any more tax money. That's not the way the calculation works. Calculation is this tax that's in this budget gets distributed over that big pie of all the property in town. If that pie is 10% more or 20% more, people's taxes don't go up 10% and 20%. You just divide the pie into smaller pieces. The rate gets decreased. The tax bills are set based on this. That's the way the calculation works. So it's spending minus other revenues, leftovers, taxes, and it doesn't matter what your values are. The taxes are the same. So it just changes your rate a little bit. So you'll see that at budget time. But, again, we're overspending by at least $700,000, and we're deferring millions of dollars worth of benefits that we owe the employees for the work they're doing right now. It's just a bad pattern.
With, may I?
Yes.
Without, without that appropriation, what happens to the budget?
It's not balanced.
And?
He can't submit it, and we won't get it certified.
We have to have a balanced.
We have to have a balanced budget at this time of year going in with these valid assumptions.
Thank you.
And the state, actually, this one must be Obama. The state actually, you know, runs through this with the auditor to make sure things are realistic. Like, we can't throw $1 million into marijuana. The state would flag it and say, "No way," you know.
Counsel, Counsel Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. No, I was just going to say that I concur with the councils across the way, on the budget, not on the cell phone ringing. But I do concur with everything that was said about balancing the budget and spending and appropriations. Thank you.
If I may, I'd just like to say I'm encouraged that it's only $1 million. It could've been much more. Through the efforts of some councilors, we brought it down, so it shows that there's a workability here that hasn't been in the past. So I'm more encouraged than I have been in years past. So, is it an ideal budget? No. Is it a good budget? It's always open for debate, but I think it's one that will function and will keep moving.
I appreciate the back and forth we've had. That's certainly different.
Yep.
It's a good thing the schools got the grants, because the schools.
Oh, I know.
Right?
Any other?
Would've been a lot worse.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
She's not here.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. May the Chair take the liberty of making the motions on the order of appropriations?
It'd be a lot easier, yeah.
It's a lot easier that way, okay. Next item on the agenda is an order of appropriation for fiscal year 2022 as amended in the amount for the, this is, this is the budget for the full city, the amount of $135,531,43.55.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded for approval. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
No.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes. Motion passes. Three noes. Madam City Clerk?
Two.
There's three noes.
One, two, three. Yes. Three noes.
Okay. Thank you. The next is an order appropriating money for the Water Department, that the following sums be hereby granted and voted from the income of the Water Department for sales of fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $6,901,830.55.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Water.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes. Next is an order appropriating money for the Sewage and Wastewater Treatment Department, that the following sums be and hereby are granted and voted from the income of the Sewage and wastewater treatment department for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $6,132,234.76.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Next is a order appropriating money for the Gas and Electric Appreciation Account in the amount of $5,819,309. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded.
Second.
Second? Thank you. Roll call.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. The next is an order appropriating money for the Community Preservation Act, that the following sums be and hereby are granted and voted for the income of the community preservation receipts for fiscal year 2022, total amount of $475,850.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
No.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is a motion for the order appropriating money for Stormwater Services in the Public Works Department, that the following sums be and hereby are granted and voted for the income of stormwater fee receipts for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $599,603.78.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes. I forgot the ambulance fund. So, out of order. My apologies. Lot of papers to keep track of. An order appropriating money for the ambulance service in the Fire Department, that the following sums be and hereby are granted and voted from the income of the ambulance fee receipts for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $3,330,778.96.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Counsel Flaherty?
Yep, thank you. I can be a no on this, but I think we should reevaluate the thing we discussed at the last meeting. It's certainly appropriate to charge the benefit costs of providing ambulance service in the ambulance budget. There's plenty of money in there on a regular basis. It should not be something we avoid. We do it in the other enterprise funds. It's a perfectly normal thing to do, and it would benefit the city by doing that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Alley?
I'm going to agree with Counsel Flaherty on this. All the other enterprise funds do this, they should do this. You know, each of these departments should be responsible for all of their benefits, their costs, and that sort of thing as much as possible. And, you know, I mean, and I think that that would be the better way to account for this. So I'm going to agree with Counsel Flaherty on that.
Thank you, Counsel. Roll call, please.
Flaherty?
Pardon? Counsel Burns?
Yeah, just to add, thank you, Mr. President Protem. Just to add to this, I agree, you know, we should, but it wasn't broken up that way. It was all one vote, and there's nothing we could do on that. I mean, if we want to revisit that, that's fine, but, I mean, they should all be broken down into, and again, I know, did your due diligence, and, I mean, there might've been votes out there, but you know what I mean? It just didn't come out that way.
We have time before we set the taxes, so we can make these adjustments before our November vote.
If it's broken out that way, that's fine, but, you know, other than that, you can't either vote for the whole or not, right? So, thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Matthews-Kane?
Counsel Mello's first.
Oh, I didn't see you over there. Counsel Mello, my apologies.
Thank you, Counsel Matthews-Kane and Mr. President Protem. I just wanted to say that I think that in addition to that particular charge factor, there's also, you know, I don't think purchasing is quite using all of those printers and copiers in that particular department. And so, you know, if once the budget's done, somebody wants to go through and make sure that everybody's being charged appropriately, you know, that's a great idea, and I think you guys can totally handle that. Thanks.
Counsel Alley?
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. And just basically to Counsel Burns' point, I mean, sometimes this is how we make our intentions known, you know, you know, not all of us are always involved with every aspect of every, you know, committee or commission, that sort of thing, certainly with the gas and electric. You know, there was us voicing our opinions on certain things, and over time, certain councils took the lead in that, and we were able to work that out. So this is one way to basically, it may not affect the vote, but it definitely sends a message that that's what we want to see happen, and we're serious about that. So it is a way of sending a message.
Counsel Matthews-Kane?
Thank you, President Protem. I'd like to second what Counselor Burns said. In general, I am in support of it. One thing I didn't like about the proposal was also taking money for the dispatch center, because I, many departments utilize each other, and if we're trying to get like every 25% out of each department, I think it gets confusing. If it was resubmitted with only, I'd be more in support. But I do think it's a solid idea. Thank you.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yeah, thank you. And when I prepared it, I did it in what I call a kitchen sink manner, where I dumped everything I could think of in there, because I figured you guys would start chopping it apart and take those things out. And the way it came out in the vote, when Counsel Sullivan was talking about it, was kind of all together. But I fully expected some people to say, "You know what? We're not paying OPEB for anybody else. Let's take OPEB out for now." Or, "We're not going to, why should we separate 911 when we know next year 911's going to be fully covered?" So I thought we might get back into some of that back and forth. But the concept is still very valid. I appreciate all the comments, and I know the mayor and auditor, they went out of their way to do this. I mean, like I said, it's extremely rare at this time in the budget to have a team work with us on some back and forth things, and we had several times where that happened. And I think they're still supportive of this concept. So we have time to do it before we set taxes. We can move the money around. It's not a big deal later on. It's not like we're magically creating money or anything, you know, it's, or we're not actually raising taxes either. So it's just a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, counsel? Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
No.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
No.
Figgy?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, did we do the water, sewage, and wastewater treatment?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Okay, that's the one I got mixed up. Next one is order appropriating money for PEG access and cable-related funds. We have ordered that the following sums be and hereby are granted and voted for the income of the PEG access receipts for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $355,315.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any comments? Counsel Flaherty?
Yep, thanks. This is one I complain about every year. This fund is paying for internet service for the entire city, and that's not the intention of this fund. This is public access. It's supposed to be benefiting the public. We've asked for things like cameras in here and special studio equipment. Other towns that have a PEG account let the people borrow cameras and make their own TV shows and all that kind of stuff, and we're taking money out of this account to pay for internet access to the city. It's an inappropriate use of the funds. I would support internet use for the purpose of providing public access, but not for running the rest of the city. That should be a city expense, and it shouldn't come out of this fund. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Morganelli?
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. Yeah, I just concur with Counsel Flaherty. We talked about this even a couple of years ago with cameras for all meetings and for, again, public, public access to this, these monies. So I would note on this one.
Any other comments? Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
No.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
No.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
No.
Figgy?
Yes. Motion fails. I've never been in this situation before, so I'm looking for some counsel. Anybody got an idea?
Motion fails.
Pardon? Okay, go on. That one fails.
We can do a reconsideration vote to see if it goes a little different.
What was the score?
Pardon?
What was the vote?
Six to five.
It was five, five.
Six yes.
Six yes.
Six yes.
Set.
So someone from the winning side has to propose that. So someone who voted no, is they willing to offer a motion for reconciliation, reconsideration?
It needs seven. It needs seven.
We can do a reconsideration vote to see if it goes a little different.
What was the score?
Pardon?
What was the vote?
Six to five.
It was five, five.
Six yes.
Six yes.
Six yes. So, someone from the winning side has to propose that, so someone who voted no, is they willing to offer a motion for reconciliation, reconsideration?
It needs seven.
It needs seven.
It needs seven. We don't want to come back.
Doesn't want to come back? Okay. We'll have to work on that one.
Someone can make a motion to amend and revote. Can I just make, Council, free?
Council Beltrand?
I just, I'm a little confused here. You know, the comments that were made about what a wonderful job they do over there and that they're underfunded, and then we're not going to do the appropriation? I don't get it. Council Morganelli, you were one to voice your, you know, that you are happy that they're doing these meetings now and we're putting all these other things together. This is what we fund. I'm confused on it.
So, somebody on the?
Someone that voted no needs to make a motion to reconsider. Anybody that's a no vote willing to do that?
I'll make a motion to reconsider, and I'm not going to change my vote. Motion to reconsider from the prevailing side.
Okay, motion been made from the
Second.
winning side, and that has been seconded. Any further discussion or comments?
Just clarification.
Yes.
What if it doesn't pass again? Where do we stand?
Well,
Do we know?
I don't know. I would have to defer to the auditor of the mayor as to what would happen if this didn't pass. Because it would whack, it would be out of balance, right? Would that upset the whole budget?
Can we just clarify that before we vote, if possible?
Yeah, ask Madam City Auditor to give us an explanation, if she would. If she can.
Actually, if the PEG access works so much in the ambulance, it's considered a reserve for appropriation. So, the fees come in from the cable company, and that's what, that's what they use to, you know, for their expenses. So, it's not going to make anything out of balance, but if you don't appropriate the money, they don't have a budget on July 1st, and they can't spend anything because it's illegal to overspend your budget per master general law. So, you, I don't know if you can go and do a 1/12 budget for them for the month of July, which is kind of a pain, but I don't know if you can do pieces of budgets like that, but it needs to be appropriated in order to be able to spend it. But again, it's not going to put the big general fund, the general fund budget out of balance, it's its own
This what?
source of funding, so.
We could vote on it July 1st, because we have a meeting Thursday, if you want.
If it's on the agenda.
Or we can reconsider, or we can make a motion to amend.
Well, we have a motion to reconsider on the floor, so why don't we go forward with that? And we'll see how that is, and if we need to have a motion to amend. That's a possibility, if we want to put it on our next meeting, we can do that as well. Council Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. Is there an option in the time that we have to correct what is wrong? Can, if a million dollars of free cash, which is just added, so that this budget can balance, because there needed to be 700,000, which leaves 300,000, which just turns out to be 55,000 less than this number, is it possible to pay the city's internet with that 300,000 we didn't need but did give? No, it can't, it has to come out of this?
We can't increase, the mayor asked us to spend a million, we agreed, we can't increase that to a million three or a million any, you know.
Well, sure, but can that, can the money that is currently being proposed to be appropriated for the city's internet come from somewhere else? So that this money could, can, is there enough time for the money that pays for the city's internet to be spent from some other pot of money? So that this budget can be appropriated, so that meetings can be accessible again? Because once we moved back in here, people lost their access. So, I would like the department to be able to spend so that they can get us back, you know, get the public back with us, but can we pay the internet from somewhere else, is my question?
Good question. Council Oniski?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. I mean, an idea might be to amend this to $100,000, keep this running, keep this operating, and then figure it out. Because right now, we're in a pretty bad situation where there's no money in the budget that, you know, I'm not going to say the skies are falling, I don't know if the meeting's going to go on on July 1st, which is in this, next fiscal year or not. But, you know, if we amend this amount, and then maybe we could come to some consensus on the balance. Is that, is that possible? I don't know the procedural part of that, but.
Well, first, we have to do the reconsideration vote unless that's removed, because you only can have one motion on the floor at a time. So, the motion is to reconsider, to see if seven votes can go yes and five will go no, or four, however the math works, but, so, that's where we're at now. We're discussing reconsideration, we'll see how that goes, and we always can go for another. Council Burns?
Yeah, quick question. Personal service, is that salaries?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so, if this doesn't go, and it doesn't go on July 1, our media specialist doesn't get paid. Okay? Any other questions, good comments, good questions?
Can you find it? I'm looking for it.
Council Alley?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. Can the auditor tell us the figure of what the city internet, what that amount is? Yeah? Yes, please.
It's on the, well, it's on the budget for
It's on the budget, yeah.
Twenty-three thousand.
I'm sorry, Council Morganelli, how much was it?
Hundred eighty thousand.
One eighty?
On the budget, it says 23,000.
Got a couple more.
Month to month.
No, it's 180,000 plus 23,000, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, 180,000.
Thank you. Okay. Council Morganelli?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. Is that, and then what's the 23,000? That's added to that? Or that's? So, I'm looking at internet charges, and then there's the GNE fiber. Hundred eighty thousand is GNE fiber. Twenty-three is internet.
So, some of the, some of the buildings are now connected to GNE, so we have to pay the actual cable company for internet charges for them to be hooked up. So, that's 23,000 for them.
Then they give it back to us.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Good question, thank you. Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk. For reconsideration, for reconsidering our previous vote.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
No.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
I'm going to, I'm going to, motion to amend.
No.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes. Motion passes. Seven, four. Am I correct in my math, Madam City Clerk?
No, you can't be. You voted no, correct?
Right.
Seven yes.
And I think that's a great conversation for a later date. I think that there's a lot of things that have been identified in this budget process that are conversations for a later date. But in the essence of moving the city forward, I think, I think we need to keep going. So, the next order of appropriation for fiscal year 2022 is amended is the following sums are hereby granted and appropriated for the purposes and objectives herein stated, and be further ordered, the amount herein specified shall be devoted to the purposes designated in this order submitted by the mayor and determined by the city council, and this is for the city council budget. Workman's comp, $200,000, unemployment, $50,000.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussions? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes, motion passes. In city council, an order of appropriation for fiscal year 2022 is amended that the following sums be and hereby are granted and appropriated for the purposes and objectives herein after stated, and be further ordered that all amounts herein specified shall be devoted to the purpose of designated in this order submitted by the mayor and determined by the city council for OPEB, $200,000.
Second.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Hope, just comment. He didn't see me.
Oh, Council Flaherty?
Thank you. If you go back to the June 17, 2021 meeting, you'll see the fund balance for this account shows a current liability of $356,399,31. $200,000 is not even going to put a dent in this. It's a minuscule amount, again, it's well over 1,500 times as necessary just to even come close to breaking even. It's not anywhere near enough, and we're not doing anybody any favors by only putting 200,000 in. Thank you.
If I may, Council Adams?
Yeah, and this is just a question. I guess, does anybody know how we rate to other cities and towns? I guess if everybody in the state is in the same boat, and we dump all this money and everybody in the state doesn't do it, are we just putting money in that the state's going to have to pay for someday?
The state's not obligated to pay this, we are.
But they will. I'm assuming if every other city and town is in the same situation, which I think they are.
No. There's
I believe they are, but.
There's a lot, but not every. And the state is going to do the same thing they did with pension. The state's not covering all of our pension shortages, they're making us do a pension schedule. That's what they're going to do here again. The state doesn't have enough money to do this, the state is behind on their own pension and OPEB obligations. So, there is no money printing factory over there. They're going to change the law and make us pay this overtime, or change the benefits. And I don't see how we can pay this overtime, I think we have to change benefits, just the math doesn't work. But to be not prepared for something and to keep making promises is not the right tact, I don't think. We're promising something we know we can't deliver, and people are betting their financial future on it, and it's just not fair. I mean, we can take care of this, we need $2 million a year, we have money in OPEB, and during, I mean, stabilization, I'm going to ask to put 2 million of it in here and to start on $2 million a year. That'll get us on track, to pay this off in 35 years, we'll be 75% of the way there, if we follow that schedule. If you look at the latest OPEB report on page 24, there's a schedule that the actuary's put together for us, and it says we need about $2 million plus 3% every year increasing for the next 35 years, and now it has to 75% funded. That's certainly doable in our budget if we make it a priority, right? We have $5 million of spending increases this year. Imagine if 2 million of that went to OPEB instead of something else? We have the capacity, but we just have to make it happen. We have to negotiate with the labor unions about things like this and say, okay, we can't give you 3% raises next year. Maybe we can do 1.5% and guarantee the next 1.5% will be put into OPEB. That kind, those kind of mechanisms can happen, and we can do this. But it's, we're doing everybody a disservice by kicking the can down the road. You know, I said it went up 87 million between the two reporting periods. That's a lot of money, and it's a real number. Healthcare is, you know, everybody knows who pays healthcare bills, the bills are going up and up and up, and we have to address it. Thank you.
Not saying I don't agree with you, and I do agree with you. I'm just, I would hate to throw all kinds of money into here and the state say, well, you guys got all kinds of money in there, you're good, but we're going to pay everybody other city and state. That's probably what's going to happen, that's in my opinion. Or someone's going to pay it, because all these other city and towns aren't going to be able to afford it. So, it's coming from somewhere, so I would hate to just dump all kinds of money in there that we could be using for something else, I guess.
We have a Cadillac health plan, and our costs are significantly higher than many other communities around us. So, a lot of places have 50/50, for example. When you retire, employee pays 50%, we pay a lot more than that. And that is a big reason why we have these costs. So, I don't disagree that the state will make, take some action, but as far as giving us money, they didn't do it in pension, and there's no sign at all that they'll be doing it for this. Thank you.
Council Alley and Council Harris?
Oh, Harris, sorry, sorry.
Council Harris, first, go ahead.
Thank you. We had the same discussion last year and probably the year before. That is not true that only a few cities is in a bad situation. There are many, many, many cities in a bad situation, and it has been stated many times by many people that the state will eventually have to basically bail every single city out. We are not alone in this, and Counselor Adams is absolutely correct. And the approach should be conservative at this point. And I know your position, because you have stated it many, many times, but the state is going to have to do something. I understand you don't believe they will, but they are going to have to help out all these cities. That's my opinion.
Counselor Alley? And then Counsel Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. We need a plan that we're working toward, where we're contributing money in some number up to this $2 million. I don't believe the state can afford to come up with this kind of money. Because the cities that are in trouble, and it's a lot of your bigger cities, it's a big number. We're talking a ton of money. We need to look at the employees contributing, possibly having options. We have, we have a Cadillac plan, not just a percentage. In other words, based on your healthcare needs, because you're talking retiree reason, that sort of thing. You know, healthcare is just getting to be ridiculously expensive. And the answer is not just keep throwing money at this thing. You know, you know, bills out of the hospital, like, it's through the roof. But we need to have a plan as a city that we're trying to adhere to when it comes to this obligation. That would go a long way. That needs to be part of our commitment to the employees, of the city, and to the city itself. So, that's one thing. At the last meeting, we talked about the fact that, and a lot of the senior department heads and people that make, handle the budget for their departments will tell you, they're all set. These benefits may not be there for the younger folks that are just starting their careers. So, we are making a promise, I'm not counting on the state for much, and like I said, that's a big number, okay? And they could afford to contribute so that these benefits are there. That's just smart fiscal planning going forward. So that the younger employees, just starting their careers, it's just sound fiscal management, that the city's made a commitment, and that they're paying their portion so that we're guaranteeing that, you know, these benefits will be there in the future before we end up in a draconian situation. I don't want to see people get cut, okay? I don't want to make those decisions unless there was some other reason. But to just keep kicking the can down the road in this wish so, hope so thing, I don't trust the state as far as I can throw it. You know, I mean, those guys just, you know, they make more messes than they clean up, okay? And I don't have a handle on the actual number, but when you start talking about bailing out these cities, we're probably talking billions easily. I mean, we're at 300 million. Really? We've got 3 billion in the stabilization fund for the state from free cash at one point, probably not after COVID, but that's a ton of money. You know, I don't want to be paying taxes, I don't like the way they handle money to begin with. I'd rather see us as a city committed to the taxpayers, committed to the employees as much. Let's work toward that. There's contract negotiations, stuff like that. There's contract negotiations, stuff like that. Like I said, maybe there's options in terms of, you know, the type of plan you're paying. We as a market, as citizens, as consumers, need to demand more. We keep asking for more money, but we never ask for that our money be worth more. And this game is killing us, okay? Inflation is killing us. Healthcare costs are like, absolutely ridiculous. My wife just had back surgery, we're probably up like $80,000. She was only in the hospital one night, you know? As consumers, as taxpayers, as a city council, we need to demand more, and not just, you know, try to figure out, you know, chase, keep chasing this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President, Pro Tem. Could I please know the length of time the reporting period was? Went up 88 million in the last report?
Two years, we get an analysis every two years.
Two years, so 44 million a year if it were straight. So, even at 2 million a year, how do we catch up? But I mean, I'm really good at math, but I'm not an economics kind of person, but I mean, if it's 350 now, and it's going up 44 million a year...
It's not.
It's not. It only went up 88 in the last two years.
Yes.
May I, can I make a suggestion here? I think this is a great project for long-range finance to come do the research, which I know Counsel Flaherty's done most of it already, come up with that plan, bring it in and explain it to us. So, I'm sure you're not the only one that has questions on this, and we can see where that goes.
I talked to the actuary, you know, just the other day, and he's willing to come in and talk to us. I asked at one of the meetings to have the outside auditor come in, scan them, and talk to us about it, because there's a lot of misinformation, and relying on the state is not the answer. The state is going to change the laws and mandate it. They are not going to provide us money, they don't have the money. They can't even pay what they promised us in schools, like, they just remodeled schools. They can't pay us the money they promised us in schools. The money just doesn't exist. So, they are going to mandate funding just like they did with pensions, but the management of that is beyond our capability, so we have to change our benefits. The sooner we start, the better off we're going to be, just like our pension, you know? And just so you all know, our own gas and electric has already pulled out of our OPEB plan, made their own OPEB plan, and started funding it aggressively, and many cities have already done that. I agree that not many across the whole state have a fully funded plan, and many have very small balances, but there are those who are aggressive in chasing this and are doing the right thing, and you can't just say nobody's doing it. The people that have a strategy and have a plan are doing it very well. Our balance sheet is now technically negative, right? We have a negative net worth. That's a real big problem, and it's going to get worse in the coming years, and that's going to affect our ability to borrow money and our interest rates. This problem is the exact same thing that's killing the post office. You've probably all read the headlines about the post office and them having to pay this. That's what's going to happen to cities like Westfield, and we don't have the capability that other neighboring cities have because our taxes are higher. Our tax rate of around 20 is a lot higher than somebody, say, on the Cape who has a tax rate of around 2 or 3. They have much more capability to handle this kind of thing, so it's not a problem. It's a problem for gateway communities that have a tax rate in the 20 neighborhood already. There's just no way to raise enough money to pay it. Thank you. So, I'm going to be a no, of course, after all that.
And I do hope that you follow up on this and come back.
Oh, we are, we have long range, yep.
So, that would be a great, great place to, so thank you. Counsel Burns?
Quick question. Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem. If we vote no on this and it goes down, does the 200,000 go back in the free cash?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, that might be, might be the idea. It doesn't seem to be enough, right? We have good arguments from Counsel Adams and from Counsel Flaherty. A no vote would send it back to free cash, that's...
Well, we just appropriated free cash, it would reduce the tax...
If I may, when the bond rating is set, one of the things they look at is the contribution to OPEB. So, if we go backwards, that's going to have the potential to lower our bond rating, which then increases the amount of money we need to spend when we borrow money. So, this is a 10% increase. It's not a lot, but it's huge in the history that I've been on this council.
10x increase.
Yeah, so it's 10x as much, so...
Thank you for the clarification.
I think it's a step in the right direction. Is it the answer? No, but I'm sure long-range finance is going to get us there.
It's better than a poke and then I would have sticked.
All right. Counsel Alley?
Thank you, Mr. President, Pro Tem. And, I mean, any amount going into this fund, I will vote for to put the money in there. You know, in times past, it's been, you know, vote, you know, some people vote no because it's not enough. Well, no, we know it's not enough, but anything going in there, I will vote to put it in this fund.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Flaherty?